Tiger Tavern anyway.
That's pretty smart he said it was air-conditioned pickup every second you can't.
Well, he's a crop adjuster.
Do you read that?
Just start saying, "I pledge allegiance."
You want to lead us in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Are you a being a tactical officer?
That's what it is.
So they have a scene planned on when they're gonna have air back on.
That's why Byron's here. He's gonna tell you everything you want to know.
Why is he sitting and not working? We don't have air.
He doesn't actually need to work. He used to.
Walk around. Alright, well, I'm gonna call me in order and say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to period of government for which stands one nation under our indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Containing a motion to declare open meeting. Second. First and second, in all favor say aye. Motion carries. The Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there. Care to read it? Roll call. Kim. Jim. What?
Yes.
Jim.
Yep, Kim.
Yep, myself here, everybody's here accounted for. I'll approve the agenda. Uh, we'd like to maybe move number eleven, the summer maintenance update up to number nine. And then go on to nine and ten. So now let's sit around here for as long. If they have a problem with that. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda stated. Is that correction?
It's a move.
Second. First and second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Close and aye. Motion carries. Uh, the consent agenda with the minutes. And then the other minutes will move on to the financials. Be your duty, perhaps, huh?
There you go.
No reason Harrison shouldn't be able to sew that when he graduates.
No reason he should be able to do that. We've been on coaching.
Yeah.
If they has any on financials, it's on the claims. There's contempt today. If there's any questions, uh, entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda as it is. So I'll move. Second.
Second.
First and second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
All close and aye. Motion carries six, nil.
Was that Anderson and Fromm?
Pardon?
Anderson and Fromm?
Yep.
Does anybody like to make a public comment tonight?
I'm good. My name's Melissa Darn.
Okay, hang on, I gotta read my. For now, the portion of our agenda says, "Decide to public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we advise you on the five-minute time period if elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Plankton Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments ever made."
Um, I just had a couple of questions. Uh, my first question is on, uh, number fourteen. Discuss and take possible action on revising policy two oh four, um, public comment at board meetings. Could you explain that?
Well, I do not know for sure what, what's gonna be discussed.
Well, um...
Is there any state statutes or anything?
There, there isn't. Public comment generally is just to receive information from the public. It's generally not, uh, intended to be a Q and A with board, but, um... So, that there's, there, there, but to answer your question, there will be no changes to that policy that are not already in, in general practice here. It's just aligning with state statute.
Okay, and what is that state statute?
Well...
I know it's not a Q and A, but I don't know.
Well, well, can you wait till we get into that? I think you just, I think we'll find out, because we'll talk about it when we get to that.
Eighty-four, fourteen, oh eight. To eighty-four, fourteen, fourteen, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I guess my concern is always the safety of our students, whatever statute may arise. And also, that it respects everyone's First Amendment rights. And my second question, and I know it's not Q and A, and I apologize. But I know that there's been some people upset about the new school year schedule, that the school year is longer than normal. Is, could I get an explanation on that also?
You may address that during my report.
Sure. Yeah, because this really is the...
Yeah, so I, I will include that in my report.
Now, these are, and that's funny you bring up, but these are things that you could call in and ask.
I did, actually.
She, she did. She, I had a conversation anyway, and I, I said, I, and she, I apologize, Melissa. I did not have time to snap a picture.
Oh, that's okay.
Of the po, of the changes to, uh, policy two oh four dot twelve, anyway, and the changes that were gonna be made, anyway, to that. So that's what she's asking about, and she was asking also about the school calendar, anyway, too. She had some comments on that. We had a conversation on that. And so, uh, yeah, I, I think, and there have been a couple of other comments, even, too, about asking why the school year's gonna run longer. And I, I, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, too. I know we'll have a discussion on it, so that'd be fine if we just address it, uh, at the end. I think so.
Sure.
Good.
Does that cover everything?
Um, yeah, I guess. I have a few questions to ask when these things are brought up. Is there any way that I can ask them when they're being discussed?
It's not really the way it's supposed to be run. You, you don't figure you can ask the questions tomorrow by calling Dr. Arlt or one of us, or, or speaking to us after the meeting?
Okay.
If you don't get your answers during the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you can always, always contact me, or, or start with a, a, a principal, or the teacher, wherever. That, but the calendar is the one that I, that the administrative team puts together to give to the board that they approve, and so we create it, so yes, that...
I do, um, I have the calendar.
Yeah.
I guess this is mainly for the, my questions are about the public comment. Um, that there's a new state statute saying that address needs to be given. Anyone that wants to give their public comment should leave an address and phone number. And I think for, um, based on some of the people that live in our community, I don't know that that's appropriate knowledge to be public. If they are a danger to our children. I just don't think that that's appropriate, and I think that should be considered in your, in your decision.
One thing I have to remember on state statute is we have no choice. That is set down by the state. It has to go into our policy, and that's the way it is.
Well, then, if that's the case, is there a way to make that information private? Because at a public meeting, if I give you my address at a public meeting so that I can speak, is there a way to keep that private?
Yes.
Because there are people in our community that are a danger to our kids.
Yep. It, it does say within the changes that we're, uh, proposing, anyway, through the statute, anyway, that we can't waive the address requirement to protect the security of individuals. So, yep, it is in there.
And that's for a lot of children in town, out of town, that need our protection.
Yeah.
And I am, um, I will wait until you address this with the schedule, but I do know that there's a lot of farm families that will be affected by a longer school year. And farming is the backbone of our community. Agriculture is what this community is based off of. And I know that my kids like helping. I know you guys have kids that like helping. And taking cows out to grass is a big deal, and it's a big deal to a lot of families. And so this longer school day, or longer school year affects a lot of families, not just mine.
Alright, well, we will address some of these questions when we get to that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
Can you record this? I know my address is, but it has been passed yet, so I'm okay. I have two things, actually, um, uh, concerning the two, number two oh four, four, or two oh four twelve. Uh, I read through both of them. Um, there are some changes that actually are not currently in the, um, discussion, but the, the part that's being changed doesn't actually have anything to do with what I'd like to say. Uh, just remember that most of the things that are in your policy are sort of made-up language. They're not actually what the statute says, because the statute only has one box at the top. It talks about what's good for the public and what's not. The actual law for open meetings is in favor of the public in nearly every case. In fact, the heading of the rules actually, in the, in the applicable statute says, "Meetings of the public body," that's you guys, "and the rights of the public." That's, that's it. That's all it says. It doesn't say anything about rights of the board, or, or procedure of the board, or any of that other stuff. Um, just a reminder that the laws aren't really here to help the board, there, or to protect the board. They're here for the public's right to access, right to information, and the right to control their local governing bodies. Um, at the recommendation of your attorneys in the NSB, the suggested one, are asking you to accept some made-up guidelines that aren't really in the statute, pretty much for the entire effort to control the public. So I would ask you to challenge that concept, since you're paying those people, and you can challenge everything that they, that they deliver to you. Everything they provide puts the board in power, and everything law does attempts to reverse that. Everything from case law to the current statute, if you read it, it's for the protection of the public, not of the board. In respect to the current public comment and board policy, uh, which again is not a law, but based off a single paragraph, specifically in the positive, um, you have a suggested addition to your policy that says that the board would have specific time for a comment. It can place a specific time for a comment. Or, it could have comment during the discussion period of each topic. So as I have recommended in the past, I would encourage you to take that second option, not the first one, and allow some public comment period during the agenda items. So the agenda item is announced, the board would discuss the item. It opens to public discussion. The board would have a motion and a second, and then the board would discuss it again. That gives the public time to hear the context, uh, hear the board's perhaps desired movement on the topic, and then make some educated comments instead of random ones at the beginning of the meeting, like I'm doing now. Secondly, in addition to the printing of submitted or, public submitted written or printed materials, there is another addition at the bottom that's not currently in our, in our packet, or in our current policy that says, "Any written or printed materials be circulated for a meeting of the school board must be submitted to the superintendent by the Wednesday preceding a Monday night meeting." That is in there. Um, but I would expect that this would include bids, letters of correspondence, and all the rest, not only from the public, since the public is not mentioned. It just says any written or printed materials. So I would like to see that be put in force. Uh, they need to be dated for accountability, and no more handing out of materials at the meetings by any party, not just the public. Thirdly, on this rule, um, the addition, there is an addition at the bottom that's not currently in the language that we have, which I assume is based off of a change in, uh, uh, school attorneys, since the last time this was adopted or changed was, was with perhaps other school attorneys. The addition of this lining that says, "And such information will only be added to the agenda at the discretion of the superintendent after consultation with the board president." I would have, be of the opinion, this is an enormous overreach. It places too much power in the hands of the superintendent and either, and the board president. One or two people shouldn't have the ability to do that. It will only have things held from, withheld from the board when the public tries to contact the board directly, which will only make worse communication. That's on the first one. How much time do I get left? Minute? I have a timeline for this music teacher thing. It's been bothering me. I haven't got a satisfactory discussion with a lot of people. Um, so I wrote down this timeline that I found from minutes and, uh, stuff on the website and news reports and things like that. I just wanna read this. You don't have to comment. I'm not asking for any. In December of twenty-one, Terry Hazelhorse resigned, was approved by the board. On, uh, January sixth, there was an applicant for a vocal position. January thirteenth, that applicant asked to be included in the instrumental vacancy as well. February, February sixth, told, uh, the instruction was given to the applicant that the board, the school would be moving forward with the decision. March fourteenth, this board approved, uh, Brittany Beagle for the music position, one ti, one point oh, full-time, um, full-time equivalent, which is great, with a vocal music, K-12 endorsement, really good thing. Um, and Mara, at the March meeting, uh, this person was told that, um, the, uh, instrumental music position would, the person would be resigning, and so asked if the person would be interested, and she said yes. On April eleventh, uh, there was information in the Osmond Republican about our superintendent approaching Osmond about sharing their instrumental music position, because we didn't have any applications received. Um, in Ham's comments, Superintendent Ham's comments, we inquired about, that, we had inquired about help with the instrumental music program. Uh, also on April eleventh, that night, um, our superintendent gave, um, Katie Carlson's resignation letter to the board for approval. Uh, but there was no item to discuss what Osmond had mentioned, as was mentioned in Osmond's minutes. Um, April twenty-fourth, the superintendent told the candidate that he was pursuing a possible shared position with a neighboring school, but on the same day listed the instrumental music position on the Nebraska Department of Education website for applicants to turn in their applications. June thirteenth, we were told that there were no applications received. Uh, and then on July eleventh, when I got my, or July seventh, when I got my packet, I noticed the addition of a halftime person that has faithfully served our school for more years than I've been alive, probably, but always tells us that it's her last time, and never wants to do it again, and she had a really great time, and she really doesn't wanna do it. So, in kind of conclusion to that, I would really encourage the board, since the board does not get to see applicants anymore, since the board does not interview applicants anymore, you would take control back of that a little bit. Because it doesn't matter who the person is. Our school has a reputation for hiring alumni, which this person was. Our school has a reputation for hiring people that wanna live in our district, which this person does. Our, our district has a, perhaps, not great track record at the moment for hiring people with great experience, but this person has experience. She's endorsed in the field that we needed to have. We were told at the last meeting that we may have to merge districts at some point because of a lack of teachers, and we don't hire the ones in town that apply. I would encourage the board to take that control back just a little bit, and be able to make those decisions for yourself. I was able to make an opinion about it, but you didn't even get to see it. Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak? Alright, we'll move on to discussion items. Number eleven, which is now number nine, summer maintenance update.
Byron is here for the facility advocates to... Bring you up to speed on the age background.
Um, tomorrow, the crane will be set up. Last week, last Tuesday, we put all the curb adapters up. This week, we're putting the units on all the curb adapters. So all the air handling units, except for one on the Pirate Gym, it, it ships the fifteenth of this month. Um, with the curbs up there, everything's good to go. Once we get it set and powered, it'll be ready. Um, we've got, the biggest supply chain issue that we're running into now is electrical. So the main gear that's getting replaced in the boiler room is not going to be here until the end of September. And, but, we're, we've got a workaround. We'll keep, we'll get everything running on the existing. Um, they'll just, when the new panels come in, there'll be a little bit more work on the back end for, for the electrician. But, you know, that's neither here nor there at this point, so, uh, they will get all that hooked up and running. Uh, same thing with the transformer that goes outside. That also is now being delayed, so that's why you don't see it out there, the pad. Uh, I think they're gonna go ahead and, talking with them a little bit, they're gonna get the pad forward and get the underground conduit at least into the building, so that it's ready when it, when it gets here. So we'll just have to play it by ear. I think they're planning on doing some of that work potentially over Christmas break. You know, to, because I'll take the service down for a few days and, and switch some things over. Um, we demoed all of the steam coils in every classroom, and including the, uh, Pirate Gym. So those are all out. The duct work is ready for the VAB boxes that we're replacing those with. They were delivered today. So, after tomorrow, once, because tomorrow will be a full day to get everything craned up on the roof. Then they'll start installing all those boxes in the classrooms. Um, with the Tartan Gym, the duct work is a hundred percent completed. The insulator's going to be here tomorrow, craning his material up, and he'll start insulating all that duct work up on the, on the roof. And then that's the one that, we're using that repurposed twenty-five ton for the Tartan, Tartan Gym. So basically Tartan Gym, stage, weight room, the concessions will all be served from that minute. And that ductwork is, is completed. In the locker rooms, we, we got the heaters in. We're getting ready to use that other repurpose cooling unit. The curb's all done. We just gotta set it in the... Bottle electric's running all the power up on the roof, got all the units. The gas piping is, is all up there, so all that we can't last do is just break the final connection. So we're looking, right now, we've tentatively set up startup for all the equipment, uh, the first week of August. So, I mean, we're, we're moving along. We're moving forward. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to walk through Tartan yet, but it's not really turned out real nice. I, we went with the Raul diffusers in there, and it's really kind of period correct for the, you know, if the, they would've had the duct work in back when that gym was built, that's what it would've looked like, the Raul. Um, and then up on the stage, we have the red fabric duct.
The bleachers.
Yeah.
The stage, you, you know, you have, you don't have the red fabric above the stage.
No, that's, that's the Raul.
Just, just the bleachers.
Yeah. Um, and then, in the weight room, there was an exhaust fan. There was already some existing duct. We just simply took the fan off and connected the supply duct into that, and we'll do the same thing in, in the concession stand. Uh, we demoed the steam piping in the Pirate Gym that was abandoned after we took the coils out. That's cut back to the wall. The end of the last week of July, we're gonna remove the steam lines in the weight room, so it kinda cleans that up in there. Uh, all the steam pipes will still be out in the classrooms, but that can be demoed at any kind of later. We just wanna get the stuff that's real visible, that's not ever reused out of the way.
So you've got a lot of stuff up on the roof that wasn't there prior.
Oh, yeah.
What's that gonna do the next time we gotta redo our roof?
Um, well, if you look, well, the, we have, the duct work is raised about that high off of the roof, and it's on stands. So they can pull the roofing off and then roof back around it. Um, so that won't be an issue. And then, of course, where the rooftop unit's set, you know, those are a curb, and they generally just been around those. So, yeah, no, we, we put a lot of work out in that, so that it later, because you will have to replace the roof, obviously. But they won't have to remove any of the duct work. It's, it's able to be roofed around.
Yeah, they, they'll, they'll find it a, a little more challenging than just rolling out a rubber. You know, they'll, they'll have to work around some things now, that they didn't before, but, you know, that's the, had to have duct work, you know, secured to the roof.
Exactly. Yes.
So you say you insulate that duct work up there. What's the life expectancy of that with...
About thirty years. Because what we're gonna do, we'll put, uh, six-inch insulation on it, and then wrap it with the aluminum jacket. So the aluminum jacket will protect the insulation underneath. It, sun, all that, doesn't bother it. Um, yeah, it can get some dents in it from hail, but it won't penetrate it, so. It'll be a good strong cover on it.
So it's not like just a wrap, it's a, it's a shell?
Yeah, it's a, it's aluminum shell that'll cover the insulation. Uh, but yeah, as far as the project, um, I think we're progressing like we had expected. Um, except for the obvious, um, shipment delays on the electrical. Everything else is pretty much on track, so.
So is there some differences in what you think you need to do, as far as I heard on the electrical boxes and stuff, taking the old ones out, putting the new ones in? Or are we square on, let everybody knows what they have to do on that?
Yeah, yeah, it's just, once we get all, get the material in here. But like I said, for right now, they'll just adapt and use what's there.
Yeah.
Um, and then they'll have to re-change it. You'll have to change some of it once the new gear gets here, but...
But the old will be removed.
Yeah, it will be removed and gone. Um, but we are making provisions to make sure we, we can run the building until all that's done.
What's, what's your dimensions of the steam pipe you were removing?
Uh, it was three, three and two inch in the, uh, gym, and then I think it's four and three inch in the weight room.
Will you do it?
Scrap it? Get somebody out back, back here.
Have you got carpet removed?
We can put a price on it.
Yeah, but...
Right, you're getting a butt ear. Do you ever like?
That's out of the beginning, it was sitting back here right now, so.
I like, well, I'll direct you to bed.
Okay, alright.
Without me.
That sounds good. But yeah, it, I mean, I'm really pleased. I was here, uh, most of the day today and walked in the building and got with the contractors, and it's right on par of what, what I was expecting. The workmanship is fantastic, so, that, that makes me real happy.
So is there any areas that were gonna benefit from putting ceiling fans in to push that air down in the summertime, or maybe they already have, like in the weight room, is there any ceiling?
You won't, yeah, you, you won't, you won't hate it. Um, and in fact, uh, you guys have been in the library for a couple of years with nothing. So we did tie this stuff into that new twenty-five ton that'll take care of that side of the building. So this will have air conditioning and good heat in it, so. Finally.
The kids will start reading.
Yeah.
Kids read too much. Hey, anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Did you wanna talk a little bit about service?
Yeah, uh, we're gonna, uh, have facility advocates submit, uh, to provide our, our maintenance, our annual maintenance on this building. We have training over there. We currently have Rossmann. They've been taking care of all of this. They're gonna own most of it up there and be familiar with what they don't own. Um, so, I, I probably, either next month or September, but we're, we're looking at our current contract with Rossmann, which runs through next May, and what out clause we, options we might have, and, and ask you to consider, the facility advocates to bid for that.
Yeah, because my suspicion will be, anyway, with the contract that was originally written, all of that equipment eventually is gone. The only thing would be the boilers that are still original. Otherwise, I mean, it's completely different system from what the original service contract was written for, anyway. Uh, well, yeah, totally different, um, rooftop units, plus now there's, the steam coils are all out of this space. Um, it was pneumatic controls, now they all have digital controls, so I would assume they would want to rewrite their contract anyway. So, might be a good time to, uh, kinda review that, look at it.
So where would your repair person come from?
It would be the installing contractor that we have there, Hal Holtman. Is there the most familiar with, with the equipment?
From Northwood.
Yeah, they're on the board, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Byron. There you go.
Alright, thank you.
Enjoy.
Uh-huh.
Other things I would share with you, you know, you, you, you maybe notice a few things if you walk around the concrete, it's been done for the nineteen forty building, so that's, uh, looks better and certainly safer. So that's, uh, uh, you know, something to, to not probably worry about for another hundred years, maybe. Um, carpet's been removed from the areas that, that are received in carpet. Uh, so Gail and his crew have added that to their, their list of things to get done this week. Uh, the annual wax into the floors. Mr. Schmidt has gyms scheduled to be finished, which was a bit of a tricky delegate. The annual wax into the floors, Mr. Schmidt has gyms scheduled to be finished, which was a bit of a tricky delicate dance, you know, with the work that's going on in both of those. So we have, uh, you know, again, it's a busy summer, uh, and Gail and his crew are doing a good job working on a lot of projects that we tend to have going on. So, um, the garage is, is, uh, is frustrating. And whether you just want to just tell a contractor to get that done. Uh, I, I never said that we were going to year two with kids, so I don't expect that that's what the thought process is that we're gonna wait to have kids finish it in the fall. I had expected that it would be done by the time school got out, but now by the time school starts, I don't know that that's happened. So, um, I have a level of frustration with the slip products, I have progress on that as well. The, the siding is in the garage, uh, some soffit, and fascia's starting to go up this week. Um, but, uh, agonizingly slow. Uh, and then the process to get the heat there, um, you know, we'll need to refresh that conversation and how to get that done. By the time it gets cold.
I think we should put a timeline on it, we should have that done because we still have electrician and all that too when he's done, so I think we need to. If we can still do that, maybe it's too late, it's very tired and they couldn't.
Didn't we purchase, uh, wiring and all the parts and the piping anyway for, for all that to be done, right?
Yeah, the.
Clemens and.
Yeah.
And through Peterson.
And Peterson.
So, so we don't have any?
Plan for that.
Material costs are, are done?
It's just where the power source, is the power source, you know, come from over here or a new transformer? Uh, or do we still have environment as part of that solution? Do we have some power now that came off of the, the two existing art rooftop units that run the pirate gym? The power that those were requiring is now available to use in that section of the building.
Good.
Uh, and so can we, can we tap into that?
Sure.
So we, we're, we're continuing to look into that.
So we don't expect to have any more costs though associated with that?
Geez, I want to, you know.
You know, I love everybody else.
I know.
So what, what's taken, does the contractor's taken forever?
Contractor's busy, has other projects.
How far behind are you on payment?
We've made, we've made one payment.
Quickly, all the materials.
Materials, yeah. So the labor.
So how that works?
Okay, so I, I, I will exert a, a little more pressure and, and I think extend, I think a level of frustration from the board that, you know, we, we had every expectation, I think, barring anything, you know, really outrageous with regard to the supply chain or availability of materials. That we would be certainly quite in that for our own.
I have to request your guidance.
Yeah, I, I would recommend not making another payment until it's, it's fixed up.
It's probably reasonable.
Okay, anybody else have anything on that? That will move on to number, which would be number ten, transportation committee.
Amen, earlier, in the main discussion was bus routes.
Get rid of the road bus, two year emergency.
They have single digits, bus rate, bus rating on two buses, so they're gonna be paying them. Saves a taxpayer twenty-five thousand dollars a year for gas. Maybe a little longer for some kids on a comp, but.
How much longer?
Don't know yet.
Yeah.
Less than a dollar.
Under forty minutes.
Still stay that way, yeah.
It drives faster.
Could I get on the clicker down, should I just apply the numbers anyway?
If all the kids rode on the same day, give them all one bus.
No, sixty-seven kids per second, well, twenty-five percent would ride any one time.
No, twenty-five percent off of that, so seventy-five percent we could have expected. The numbers you guys know, but I of course have put out a request for if you might need transportation anytime, excuse me, that.
Yeah, I'm with you.
So the, so we have a total number of families, and now that's probably not all inclusive, there'll be some more, and that's fine. But we wouldn't ever have a hundred percent of the folks that said, I would need some transportation at some point during the year. Half of those folks said, yes, but only on this time when my, their older sibling would be here and only on this day and I'll drive him here, but I might need him. Because that's the way I work, would there be ever a time where you might need to pick up or rock off? Uh, and that's a total of sixty-seven kids. But I would bet that it would be, uh, every day closer to mid forties, maybe fifty.
But short answer, they won't all fit on one bus.
Yeah.
Or maybe you do for a time here.
Route would take.
Yeah, it could, yeah.
You'd have three buses.
Yeah.
We're trying to figure out a route right now.
Yeah, other buses are taking it down.
And about forty percent of that number, maybe thirty-five, a little more, more, are, are all piece of Brunswick. You know, and we, we, the shuttle of Brunswick is our fullest bus and that will probably stay about the same. So Mr. McCabe, he, he knows our roots, he knows our families, he knows where they live, he's been putting these roots together for a couple of decades. So, um, I asked him to put together a three-root system. And he knows how to do that and how to minimize, uh, time on bus. So he's gonna do that, get that back to me, I'll push up transportation committee. And, uh, I think, you know, it's probably the, the prudent thing to do.
It's worth a try, I mean, if it's not working, you can always go get another bus and add a route.
We have a bus.
We have a bus.
We, we just, they're gonna get rid of, there's two buses that have sat that.
Trying to get out.
Basically trying, yeah, we're trying to scrap them. And then there's one bus, bus number five has like two hundred thirteen thousand miles on it, and he wants to call that bus. But we still have.
We've got three buses, uh, two that are, have been off the road and one that needs to come off the road. The bus that arrived today will go to activity. The activity bus that we bought in seventeen, uh, can go to room.
That was been active, that was an activity.
It's, it's all highway miles since seventeen.
Well, because we have six total buses counting activity bus.
That we're gonna jump.
Oh, that we're gonna keep.
Yeah.
So five, that would be, you know, for the route, it's going to run three buses, that's at two spare.
So we're setting with three drivers, full-time drivers?
I think he, he feels confident in that he can rotate three. You know, he doesn't have three every day, morning A and P. And he's recruiting one pretty hard right now and he feels he's got a fifty-fifty shot. But we're room one for sure, possibly two, that we're solid A and P and route driver.
And that would be without Bob having to drive himself.
Correct.
He thought he had four drivers, that's, I mean, he, he thought if he had to, he could make four routes, or he'd have people to drive four buses if he had to. It would be a lot easier.
Not, not telling him.
Not counting, he just, that's what he said to us, that he had four, but it's just not making sense to run their buses, you know.
That sounds good. Close the time for that.
You have to make your work about, about state's time. You mentioned it.
Yeah, um, I'll make sure it's clear in minutes.
Alright, move on to American Civics Committee.
Well, the American Civics Committee met here at Saturday, um, heard that what the legislature bill, what bill is that?
Three ninety-nine.
Three ninety-nine requires. Dr. Hall read that off, the requirements, and then we were told how the administrative staff kinda incorporates that into the curriculum. Make sure that we observe certain dates that, and then I think there was also requirements, you know, for each student attending a meeting, writes paper, had three options. Needs to be required before they graduate. Just kinda just explain how we meet all those requirements. I think we're doing a good job of that.
Just that. Alright, questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, number twelve, review board policy four oh two oh nine, five oh four oh three or five oh four oh nine?
The four oh two oh nine is your recognition service for employees, which we do in office. So just good for you to be aware of what the policy states with regard to recognizing, um, longevity of service for employees. So, uh, in my notes, you can see those employees that, um, are, uh, scheduled to be recognized beginning with those ten years of service. So ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and then every five-year increments, uh, employees are recognized by the district, by the school board. Uh, the, your policy states what, what's their token. So just wanna make sure that you're, you're aware of that and comfortable with that on an annual basis, that you think that's reasonable and appropriate, you know. A certificate for ten years of service, um, a, a plaque, which plaque in quotes, which really has become a, a little crystal.
Apple.
With their name engraved, playing public schools fifteen years of service. Jersey flag, they have personal flag. An appropriate gift, twenty years' service is an appropriate gift. In the past, that's Kelly, has that been clown cash? Or what has that been, twenty years of service? It's been a couple of years since we had seventy, twenty years of service. Uh, you know, and even in your Christmas gift, you talk about this every year, you know. And then twenty-five on up is an additional personal thing, which is a, a nice little person. But at twenty, it's a little vague, and in the past, it's been, here's twenty dollars clown cash for the, for the pink guy.
Really? You don't have to think about mine.
But some people might appreciate twenty dollars in cash as opposed to a flag that they don't know where to get.
I know exactly where it is.
How does a half a personal be, does that make any sense whatsoever?
A half?
If you hear that earlier, twenty years.
Well, absolutely, they would appreciate that as a teacher.
Yeah, you know, I always, you know, give the, the other side, you know, if we're rewarding somebody by letting them not do what it is that we need them to do and what they've chosen to do and what they love to do. Here you go, and now we, which, again. That's.
Yeah. So they give them half a day personal.
Basically, John's overall doesn't wanna give them any days.
Well, he's right, it's important that they're there.
The kids, no, no substitute can do what a teacher has.
Learning drops off, right? I'd just like to come up with something, I don't know, something different.
It's illegal for a woman, give them like a monetary gift, right?
Clown cash is okay.
But not regularly.
But yeah, you can get the cash, which is a lot different, but.
Okay, let's move on to the next one then.
So, so you wanna do what we've done in the past, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Somebody comes up with some good idea of different.
Alright, alright.
Five oh four oh three?
So five oh four oh three, we are, uh, required to review this annually prior to August first, and so here we are. Uh, student conduct, so Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Hudson are primary. Folks responsible for student conduct and student management. If they have any recommendations for language in here to be changed or anything that's not appropriate, um, now would be a time for them to share that with you. So you should do the review manually.
Everything just runs perfectly smooth, right?
Of course.
So I ran in, I forget which one it is now, but when you fill out a form or if a form gets filled out, a complaint, it's supposed to go to the board. Can you see? My, anybody else remember that? I don't know if that was on this one or if it's on.
Last, last sentence.
Student codes contacts in my table?
Yeah. Very last sentence.
Is that just like a?
Uh, that's just a, receive, acknowledging that they received it? The last sentence of the policy?
Yes, uh, play on page one. All student codes of conduct shall be submitted to the board for approval or review.
Yeah, that's essentially this policy, or, uh, if in the handbooks, they have specific guidelines for, uh, um, behavior and consequences for behavior, those would fit under student conduct. So that's essentially the language that would be in handbooks.
So why don't we ever see it and we never have it?
Well, you're, you have it in the handbook.
Oh.
They're building it.
Oh, oh, okay.
I thought it was a complaint that was filled out and filed, but.
It hasn't happened or whatever. Does that hear me on like if, like somebody calls in on Monday and says they have a complaint, we should hear about it?
Yeah, and they wanna fill out a complaint. Okay, I'm not supposed to know, but no.
I'll do that one then. Move on to five oh four nineteen.
Uh, five oh four nineteen is your student fees policy, and mandated by statute that you review this every year by August one. So, you know, most schools have some fees for, um, materials, uh, that are not routinely necessary for the mandated curriculum. Just, it, it, it varies a little bit school by school, but you have a list there, um, on, on your first page that identifies things that you could charge fees for. Uh, right now, we only have, our only fee is for technology, uh, which covers, you know, insurance or, and or repairs. That's a, and, and some schools charge, most schools do charge technology fees, some don't. It just varies a little bit by school, but it's, it's fairly routine. And it's twenty.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars. So, and, and any fees at elementary? Yeah, so that's, that's, uh, you know, one fee in high school. Went one-to-one, you know, two years ago, and obviously one-to-one is not our only technology expense. And technology enhances the curriculum, not necessarily mandated to, for teachers to teach the curriculum. So it's kinda considered something that, not so much anymore, a little, uh, years back, it was a little more of a, well, you might consider it for LA, yes. But now that facilitates the curriculum, now it's, it's probably becoming more of a necessary piece of, of school, um, resources. Align maybe with, with textbooks a little bit, you know, we don't charge textbooks.
I'm definitely wondering if it shouldn't be the one or a budget, I mean, we like to say everybody's got one. It's not an option, basically, every kid has one, so why are the kids asking parents to pay for one in the district?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly reasonable to consider, at school boards, I think it has these very discussions, because some don't, some, a lot of one-on-one schools don't charge technology. Most do, but they may be having these, uh, these same discussions.
Isn't it issued, or are there any families that can't afford the twenty dollars?
Well, you do have to be waiver, so, and we have quite a few families that, that fill out the, the fee waiver, but, and that's based on, uh, pre-renewed, yes, qualification.
I guess as long as they're a waiver.
So they have an option, they have an option.
A way of doing it anyway. I, I don't have a problem, it's all, I got three kids that pay three fees, so I don't have a problem paying it.
That was my concern, some of that maybe had four, five.
If they have a way, any way of, of, of way to be, then I'm fine with leaving the policy as it is, so.
Alright, we were, we were also, we were also thinking about, you know, we, our, uh, so our activity passes. Our, you know, we have a family activity pass and a builder activity pass and a student activity pass. We don't sell a whole lot of student activity passes. We've done a few different things over the years where the kids are involved in the school activity, they get a free activity pass. And if you play football, you don't have to pay. And if you play football, you don't have to pay to go to a volleyball game, for example. Or if you're up to boys' basketball, we're not going to send you to go pay to get into the girls' game, you know, for example. And, you know, and I think that's a reasonable thing to consider, but we have a lot of students that don't, that aren't in an activity, that don't buy anything. You know, it's just hard for people to take gate, to keep a list of, you know, what students have to pay and which don't. So, you know, Mr. Schmidt and I had talked about, well, maybe you should just all students just get into all activities free. Well, I've walked a little bit at that, I mean, I suggested that maybe all students should pay an activity admission fee. And then we just know all students get into all school activities that we would normally charge admission for. Or if their parents buy a family pass, they don't pay an activity fee because they're covered under their parents' family pass. So that was just one thing that we were kind of wrestling with. Obviously, we need board support for that, and whether we, you know, we obviously didn't think, we wanted necessarily ask you to consider that as an action item tonight, but. Not a huge deal, but just something we wrestle with a little bit every year on, you know, gate admission and students. And should they pay, should they not pay?
What is your goal of gate admissions? What are you trying to?
Well, to cover activity expenses, to help us from being too far in the red on activities. So to cover everything from officials' fees to sports equipment, basketballs, helmets, shoulder pads, wrestling mats.
Have to pay for score.
Transportation, yes, goalkeepers, line judges, just, so activities always run in the red. And I wouldn't know for sure what, you know, what our revenue is annually on our activities, on our gate. It'd be thousands, thousands, thousands of dollars, but we spend ten, ten thousands of dollars on activities. So this wouldn't make, this wouldn't be a huge difference, you know, having an activity fee for seven, twelve students, or maybe it should be six, twelve, four, twelve. I don't know, but the discussion is elementary kids need to have a fee. So it just helps a little bit with, well, do we charge kids or not, or who's on a list, who's on their, who has a parent, who has a family pass? So that was just something we wrestled with a little bit. So I just, I guess I'd just have you maybe think about that too, and it can be something that we consider later if necessary.
You probably don't have it broke down, do you? How much your student, how much revenue you get from students, is it just all lumped in?
Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't be much, that where we have students that are paying, and they're four dollars. If they're walking in, it means their parents got a family pass.
Kind of like to match it with your charging activity fee, you'd like to get somewhere as close to what you think you were making.
Yeah, right now, a student pass is forty dollars. If a student buys a pass, I don't think we sell many of those. We weren't thinking, you know, a number that Mr. Schmidt just threw out as one bucks, you know, that'd be five activities. So if they attended five activities and paid four bucks, we have probably, how many activities we charge admission for, Mr. Schmidt? Maybe thirty a year, forty a year, football, basketball, volleyball, primarily wrestling, and so.
Doing junior high and high school, we're probably fifty.
Do you have any participant fees? For example, if you play football, it costs so much to play football for your uniforms, women. Ever looked at it from that direction?
Oh, you could probably lump that in there, where you consider it an activity fee.
You know, to me, when you look at it from starting charging students, you've got so many students can't even afford a lunch. You know, they got to participate in social activities at the school. I'm in favor of waiving it completely for the kids, and making it up somewhere else, fundraisers or something. And I'm all in favor of adults and singles being paid to come through the board, but it's a kid. You really got enough stress about having to worry about, I can't go to the gigs, I ain't got no money. Might keep them from problems.
Generally, it's a better place to be than the alternative if they're not at home.
I mean, I'd be happy to pay, you know, football, if you need a fee to cover some of the expenses, I mean, twenty-five bucks a player, I don't think it's out of line. And if they can't make that, then, well, maybe they can get a job and cover it, because, you know, if they want to play that sport, I think that is their responsibility, it's not a core curriculum.
A lot of schools do charge a fee for football in particular, because it's far away.
I think that's the way to go, myself, but that's my thought.
But yes, you wouldn't want it to be to dissuade anybody. So you'd have to identify, you know, who honestly, you know, can't afford that, and how can we cover it elsewhere, which we could always find a way.
I guess I'd have an issue, you got a kid that played four sports a year, and then he went to one other sport and they're charging him, you know. He worked all summer, worked his tails off all summer, and we support their school, and be good for their school, and they're charging.
Didn't we get charged a good amount of room at school? I'm pretty sure I paid every damn blood volume I went to.
Right now, do your, your kids that are involved in things, they have a student pass, don't they? I did when I was still teaching.
Yeah, we've, we, our kids out for a fall sport, we've given a fall sport activity pass. If they're up for winter sport, we've given them a, and so the problem with that is those kids are good, and then there's a percentage of kids that aren't up for a fall sport that find their way in or walk in.
At the other door.
And does it, do I expect Ms. Bremer to tackle somebody?
I know.
No, it's just, it just makes things a little more complicated for our ticket takers.
It is, it is, it's always been that way, but I think the right chance, we need to pay.
We're positive, yeah.
But I know when, before I retired, that when I was taking tickets, the kids that played had some, that were involved in activities, had student pass. But that, it was harder because it's, they, the other kids opened that door on that east side there, let them in, and you, I'm not going to chase them, do those.
Yeah, that's, kind of on the administrative team, you kind of try to keep an eye on that stuff, I mean.
It's hard.
One or two or three a year, you know, they're trying to elect it, and.
Have your eyes everywhere.
You just kind of like to not worry about it. You wouldn't have to if you're like, everybody's free, or everybody pays an activity.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard.
But, so that was just something else.
Now, if we had a dunk cage in the middle of football season, you'd be in the dunk cage, and we sold it for fifty dollars a ball, and we'd really, we'd get rid of it.
I'll do it.
I'd pay for it.
Game on.
Got to sell advance tickets.
Oh, yeah, I'd pay two tickets.
Kind of bullseye on everybody like that.
As long as you don't take the cage around where I'm sitting, I'm good.
Can't miss.
Let it ride.
Okay, I'll move on to, let's end with that, with board development. Pages one twelve to one eighteen. Kind of talked about committees a little bit last month, and if we wanted to settle up a little different or not. If we kind of decided that we were good and thought we were doing, maybe rotate around a little bit upon who goes on and who goes off. I know one thing in here, I'm supposed to, when we make a motion, you make the motion, and then you ask if there's any more discussion, which a lot of times I forget to do. So if there's ever a time, you only have discussion, and we make a motion, second, I don't give you the chance, and you have something to say, make sure you let me know. You should have a chance for more discussion after the motion and second is made. Thank goodness we don't have to do what they suggest on some of these committees every once in a while, some of these committees. Action items, number fourteen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy two oh four twelve, two oh four point one two, public conference board meetings.
So this actually revises and replaces policy that titled Public Participation, which that's the one that you find two oh four twelve in your manual, which we call Public Participation. So the unit camera will generally responds to what they see as needs. Well, just takes one senator to submit a bill. And so the unit camera oftentimes will write a statute that might apply to the entire state, or in this case, all school districts. And then, you know, legal teams will put into language meeting that statute. And so oftentimes, your policies are designed to fit, like, Republic Schools and Platteville Public Schools, Omaha Public Schools and Oregon Public Schools. So this one on twenty four twelve does not change any language. It doesn't change any practice, really, in what you do. It doesn't change any practice. The only thing significant maybe in there is that it requires members of the public to address the body to identify themselves. And I think Mr. Salzner's always asked them to do that. It now is required that they at least identify themselves. I think it is totally reasonable for you to waive any other requirement of identifying your address or which body you represent. I think that's a perfectly, in some circumstances, in some school districts, they may feel that's a little more necessary. Who do you represent, which you're only supposed to really represent yourself for the most part, but. So this is a response probably to maybe some of the things that have happened in other school districts that really don't happen here. So, you know, I think, I would recommend that you strike that language. After the word herself in the third paragraph, strike everything to the period. So the board requires any member desiring to address the body to identify him or herself. That's it. I, that's what I would recommend. So if you just strike the rest, because I think that's a perfectly reasonable request. And in fact, that was going to be the primary part of my conversation to you tonight, that I just, I don't think you need to do that. And you're not required to do that. So, and then with regard to any written or printed material, you know, certainly, that's language, you know, such as that, have been similar in previous policy. I don't think in the six years I've been here, I've ever had a request by member of the public to present materials to board. Give them something to me by Wednesday prior to the meeting to be distributed to you. I don't, I don't think that's ever happened in six years.
I remember one time our person who banned instruments, we had a local person that wanted to.
Oh, yeah. That was before the time, but yes, I'm aware of it.
Tried to sell banned instruments, and he brought stuff to the meeting to hand out and stuff that hadn't been brought to the superintendent.
So it's really not an issue here, but you do have to have something in policy at least that guides that. So that, yes, you don't have things that are presented to you at a meeting, which I think anybody would reasonably say that, that shouldn't happen. But it's whether it's reasonable enough for the superintendent and the board president to make that decision, whether it's going to be distributed to the full board. I don't think Mr. Salzner and I have ever had that conversation in five plus years. And I guess I think it's reasonable for that language to be in there if that situation were ever to arise, that superintendent and the board president could determine whether it's necessary material information for the board meeting.
That would need to be pushed out, if we did decide to allow it, it would need to be pushed out to the board, because their packets would already be out by that time.
Well, forget about Wednesday, about Thursday packets. If you and I, you know, determine there's reasonable material to be included.
And if it wasn't, it didn't make it, would it just be the email, the order? So nobody was caught off guard at the meeting?
So again, I recommend only changing the language in here to strike the word including an address to the end of that paragraph, to strike all that. If you think that's appropriate.
I would kind of like it if we let the public comment throughout our discussion items sometimes. Because I do think it's kind of bogus to sit up there in the beginning and try to like throw a dart at what you're going to talk about, you know? I just think it's very fair for the public here.
I see your point, but there would have to be some specific rules to it, otherwise you're going to be, you could be here all night long.
That's the one thing I thought of two years of time, and maybe it'll take a long time.
So in my mind, if they have a valid concern that they want to have some discussion on it, couldn't we be put on the agenda? Or cause that?
If they have a complaint, ask to be submitted to us in writing. And then, I believe, it's in policy, I think it's one zero zero five dot oh one, right here in the public conference board meetings anyway. If you look at that, I believe it talks about the process that is getting that approved, be put on the agenda, and has to go through.
There has to be a process first.
So, but I mean, these, we talked a little bit about it in the past meetings anyway, about getting a phone call in any way, and then people wanting us to ask at the board meeting that night. And it's, if it's not on the agenda, one, we're violating open public meetings, apparently. So we have, if I had them submitting it in writing anyway to the board, that gives them a conduit, possibly getting something anyway out of it.
So there is an amendment.
There is an amendment, yeah, but we need to direct them that way.
Yes, absolutely.
One, we can hear their concern, sure, but we need to direct them in a direct way, in a way of getting there. And I think we, probably everybody on this board probably needs to review that call.
What was the number again?
It's one zero zero five dot oh one.
I don't see how it's going to take any longer for somebody to comment during the discussion, if they're moving into a minute or two. And then what it does when four or five people out here want to comment, and they talk about that.
But I think you can't, you can't let me get a question answered, it would have to just be talked about this, and then they comment on it. Because otherwise, it's a public question answered back and forth.
So we're not allowed to do any kind of public comment?
No, 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 you would, you would.
It's just technically supposed to be part of the meaning, I mean, to comment on it back and forth. We end up taking.
The board is elected to make these decisions.
They can certainly comment. I think it's better too at that, to take the time. Because you don't know what else you're going to, what you're going to talk about.
Well, because sometimes you might say something at the beginning of the meeting that after the meeting goes on, you really didn't have to say, because it talks about that.
Right, right.
Or whatever.
Or they didn't do what they might have been able to do, but they didn't do it anyway, you know, just like this, what we just did. We could have put some rules in here, but we chuck them, you know?
What was supposed to be a move to public comment or discussion to the very end, the last one?
You've already made all your action decisions, but it's open with.
Discussion is all that's left.
But you don't need to have that discussion discussed, because it's done.
Yeah, when they're at the beginning, it gives you thought, you know, you're thinking about it. You know, I think about like the mask, the people that came and were either for or against the mask. When it came time in that agenda to address that, we had their opinions before. So if they went to the afterword, we might have already passed it, and they, their discussion wasn't necessary.
That's our concern. You know, like I said, you were concerned about this policy tonight, and you did call some people ahead of time. You looked at it, and you made your voice heard before the meeting, so. So we, you know, we heard your opinion on it before the meeting, and we can take that into whatever, you know, thought we won or our decision making. But it's not like just because you said ahead of time, you're not heard, and you're still heard, and you still know your opinion is. But I get it the other way too, where something else gets brought up you didn't think of, and you got, you know, an opinion on that, but you don't pick up a public comment.
And the school board meeting is not a public meeting.
Right. You're mistaken. The board is not.
It's not a public.
You're mistaken, you can call me out on it if you want.
It's not a public meeting.
You are mistaken.
And so.
You can take advice from whoever you want, he is mistaken.
I don't think you're authorized to speak.
I don't, he didn't recognize you either.
Can I say one more thing? When it comes to the public comment, I know that nobody wants to be here all night, but when there's a problem, and like in twenty twenty, there was a problem. How would you handle it with your kids? How would you handle it with your spouse? A problem needs to be talked out, and it takes as long as it takes. And it's not going to be every time. I mean, how often do you have meetings where no one is here? No one has a problem. And forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but sometimes when there are real issues, it's going to take a while to hash it out. And people do elect you guys to represent, and I know personally, there's a lot of things I just learned right now. And I know personally, there's a lot of things I just learned right now. So there has to be a way to better communicate how to get these issues handled.
To command, I mean, we've got that established.
Right, but I didn't know giving anything, like a written, a complaint in writing to the board. I didn't know that.
It's because it doesn't exist.
In the policy, bro.
Never been required before, not one time. Not one time. It's never been required.
Let's move on. See, this is why we don't do it.
This is why.
Because it leads to this.
Because you won't control and read the law. You're exactly right.
And that's what the problem is. That's why they don't do it.
You're listening to policy, not the law.
That's enough, bro.
You can ask me to leave.
I will pretty soon, keep smart on. All right. So we need to make a-
Motion to approve as read. If you approve with striking that last sentence on the paragraph three.
Just changing that wording on that last.
Yes, as it's as it shows there, yes.
So I'll make a motion, a motion to approve policy two oh four one two, page one. As stated, minus everything in the third paragraph after including an address. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been first and seconded. Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries.
Was Mr. Paul the second?
Yes, I was.
Thank you.
Fifteen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy number five oh eight point one seven. Seizure safe schools.
Okay, Nebraska statute seventy nine thirty two oh one to thirty two oh seven mandates training for school officials with regard to reacting, responding to students who may be susceptible to seizures. So it's just it's more necessary training for our staff to keep kids safe.
So you'd have the entire staff trained or just like a couple?
Train for employees handling epileptic seizures in a school and periodic training for all certificated employees. So that would be all certificated employees, administrators and teachers.
Yeah, that's, I think that's important to have everybody. Because I had a child in kindergarten at times that had seizures. But she that time should be should be a PE or a ECEF without, you know, this does that.
I agree that, like, yeah, it would make no sense to only have a couple of people.
Right, right.
Do you, do we have any basic training for any teachers like CPR or basic? They're all trained in it. Teachers should be included. Do you throw them over on their sites and show them the following?
Yeah, it'll be simple training. We have several of those throughout the year, most of them at the start of the year, which which aren't incredibly intense, but they they need the money to do this action.
They need to know what to do. I'm happy with that.
Do I make a motion to approve policy five oh eight one seven?
I'll make a motion to approve policy five oh eight point one seven.
I'll second that.
First and seconded, Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Sixteen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy seven oh two point zero three, budget adoption process and accompanying regulations.
Okay, so these are just new processes for budget adoption. If you want to go through and look at all those regs, feel free to go through them. But I get it, I would just tell you that as your superintendent-
Sure.
And I prepare the budget, yes, I will follow those guidelines and you won't notice much different. I will say that.
I'll make a motion to approve revision to policy. We're on the seven. Sixteen, seven oh two. Seven oh two point zero three as read. First and seconded, myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chance? Motion carries six zero. Seventeen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy nine oh two point zero two, construction plans and specifications.
So you see that the the change was made from a hundred thousand to a hundred and eighteen thousand. That's the only difference in this policy. So they just increased the amount by eighteen percent of the minimum needed to engage in architect or professional engineering.
That's not even inflation?
Yeah. Close.
So I make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve revision to policy nine oh two oh two as read. Second that.
First and seconded, myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Jim? Chance?
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Eighteen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy nine oh two point zero four, bids and awards for construction contracts.
And this changes from a hundred thousand to a hundred and nine thousand. All other languages are the same.
I'll make a motion to approve policy nine oh two point zero four as stated. Second?
Second.
First and seconded, Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank, number nineteen, discuss and take possible action on accepting the resignation of Brighton Marat effective at the end of the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year. Not much discussion there.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Brighton Marat of two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two.
Second? Jim? Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Motion carries six zero. Discuss and take possible action approving a one point O FTE teaching contract for Duncan Williams. Discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve a one point O FTE teaching contract for Duncan Williams for twenty twenty two, twenty two school year.
Now second? Chance?
Oh, that's what seizure place in Brighton.
And that's just a one year contract for, that's COVID nine.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Motion carries six zero. Twenty one, discuss and take possible action on approving a point five FTE teaching contract for Jan Kraus. Thank you, Jan Kraus.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve a point five FTE teaching contract for Jan Kraus for the twenty two, twenty three school year.
Now second? Jim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Twenty two, discuss and take possible action on approving building handbooks for the two thousand twenty two, twenty three school year. I don't want to read this whole thing, guys, so just tell us what-
We, whatever's highlighted in gray are the changes. At least in mine, the elementary.
I don't know if I highlighted mine. Am I lighting it in gray?
Most of the language, though, was universal for both of us.
The big things we hit on were parties. Teachers wanted something consistent with that.
Yeah, there's only one in the elementary.
Highlighted?
Just one.
Oh.
So did you highlight your changes on it?
Oh, maybe I did. Maybe I gave-
Put them all on one sheet.
Yes, okay.
I don't know, but I don't think, I don't know what was in what.
Yes, then the one page is the list of changes we put in.
It's changed.
Did you read it?
Need a green marker?
He's got such good kids, he wishes they got trouble as well. So you condensed this a year ago, right? Took all that stuff out and whatever.
Yeah.
Apparently you're happy with what you took out, you didn't need it.
Yeah. Like I said, we just changed a couple of things with tardies because teachers asked us to. Homework policy, we were going to go with if a student doesn't get a homework assignment done, we're going to have them come in after school for half an hour and do that. I know that'll be an argument in our building because kids always tell us they have to work or whatnot, but the main thing should be to get their schoolwork done. So I'll deal with that when that comes up. But it is going to be something that's mandatory because we have a lot of missing assignments. And it's not fair for our teachers to have to be chasing kids. So I got to do something to try and help them out a little bit. That led into advantage, and I know the elementary's been doing it. High school will do it. So that's three thirty five to four fifteen after school. So any kid that's failing or that doesn't get their homework assignment will come in here and we have a coordinator that'll run it and she'll be in charge of making sure that homework gets done and turned in and they're getting help on the assignments they need. And then, let's see. In-school suspension, I made a change that kids have the Google Meet, so they have to join on their laptop for class. So they're not just going to be sitting in the back room. They actually will still join class, it'll just be through a device. And then cell phones in this building will, they're going to have to put them in a container before class. So when they go in the door, they'll put them in a pocket organizer. That'll be a watch, a phone, anything. And they'll keep it in there and then when they leave, they can pick them up. So that way it's not a distraction during class. And yes, there'll be a few students that argue that, so. But I've got a few of those already prepared, so.
Yeah, how are we going to do the TikTok video mark?
Yes.
On the homework, how come you guys don't just give them a zero and then they fail, they fail? I don't know. I've just never liked this homework thing.
Politically correct, isn't it?
As long as you pass the test and have good grades in the test, why the hell does it matter if you do the homework or not?
Because they're grading a behavior. That's the big argument right now. And the fact that kids are making a choice just not to do it, there has to be some consequence for them not doing something that was asked of them to do. I mean, it's kind of hard for them to learn the material if they don't do the homework. So but I mean, I can see-
Pass the test, what does it matter?
And not every teacher grades it where they do, the test gets more credit than what the homework does. There's a lot of fifty fifty.
And on the teacher's side, they go to a lot of work to present, to work up their assignments.
But on the student's side, I feel like teachers do a lot of busy work just to say that they can give you the homework. I don't know. I just feel for those kids because I was always one that I'd put my homework, I'd copy off somebody in the locker room or whatever because I didn't need to do it. And I still have like eighties, you know? And you can't tell me there isn't a bunch of kids walk these halls, I can still do it that way.
Oh, that's from the beginning of time, Chance, you're right, but-
I mean, I get it, there are certain kids that have to do their homework to be able to learn the-
Also, you know, responsibility.
But you're kind of punishing the kid, you know? Just saying.
Need to get a gift to kid art homework.
No, not really. The world, the world needs welders, it's amazing, CEOs. So the phones getting put in pouches, that create issues where kids grab each other's phones or they get dropped or pile up people when they go out and leave and everybody's trying to grab their phones at the same time and all that. There's no problems, right?
No. We've had a couple of teachers do it this last year and there weren't any issues with it. So I I was told a couple of times in the last few days that there's some concerns about the calendar being a little bit longer anyway this year. I I don't know what the discussion was because you maybe enlightened the board, maybe you know what was discussed and what your questions were asked and maybe what your response was.
Yeah, so required by statute to have thousand eighty hours for students, but I build the calendar based on teacher contract days, a hundred and eighty five. So if I have a hundred and eighty five teacher contract days, I'm going to have well over a thousand. So we don't count hours. We count teacher contract days. And we know when we have non-student teacher contract time, you always have some of that built in there as well. But you're still well over the required minimum number of hours for students. Thousand eighty, high school, thousand thirty two in the elementary. So so we still have the same amount of, the same amount of days. But the but the school year this year is four days longer than last year. Starts later, but it does go four days longer. So for example, the last day of school, past several years, has been May eighteenth, May seventeenth, May sixteenth, May twentieth. It's scheduled to be May twenty fourth. So it goes to that next Wednesday where generally they had their last day of school was the previous Thursday. So it does go into that next week into Wednesday. So we start later and we did add a full four-day weekend for spring break. That always been a Friday off, we made it a Thursday, Friday. We found that we have people that leave early skiing primarily, you know, we'll have more than just a few families that might use that time for a little bit of an extended four-day weekend. I think that is, one, two, three, state boys' team basketball as well. And so we, so we turned, so we 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 put it, we increased that spring break in March to a Thursday, Friday. So that means I needed another contract day somewhere. We we started a little later because when I count back, because I always start in May, generally I'd state track. Don't like to go after state track if you don't have to. And then count back. And so sometimes that gets us a couple of years ago, that got us to August eighth. That's pretty early to ask your teachers to come back. So I consider, I consider our teachers and when it's reasonable to have them return and certainly our families and then try to be consistent with what we've done in the past. Folks generally kind of count on some continuity from year to year to year. So so the calendar is essentially pretty much the same. The only thing they might notice is, oh, we have two days off during state basketball or we have a four-day weekend to go skiing where we usually only had a three-day weekend. And, oh, we're, we go to May twenty fourth where generally we've been done on the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So it it, I I get it that it absolutely seems like it's a week more of school. It's the same amount of school, it's just a little later start, a little later finish. So state track, it all has to do with state track. State track used to be a Friday, Saturday, class A, B, C and D. COVID split it to A and B, two days, and then C and D, two days. And so A and B went on a Wednesday, Thursday. C and D went on a Friday, Saturday, as we had always been, not a problem. The initial discussion was that they were going to flip-flop that every year. So they were going to put class C and D state track on a Wednesday, Thursday. So they were going to move it back two days. So when I tried to use that as the rationale to build the calendar, it would have put our last day of school for students on Monday. That's a little nonsensical. If I pushed it even earlier into the previous week, it would have meant that school would have started on about August sixth. That's nonsensical as well. So with a with a Wednesday, Thursday, state track, I knew that we're going to have to go past state track. And so by going into that next week, a couple of days, you can't just go one day with students. You really need two at least for those final couple of days of school. You can't come back on a Monday and that be your last day of school, which you know what the last day of school looks and feels like. You know, so had me going to that next week and then build back and to find that our first day of school will be on August eighteenth, which is a little later, but still a pretty reasonable term.
Isn't that Thursday or something?
That's a Thursday.
Isn't that kind of about going back to school on a-
No.
If you ask the teachers, Chance.
Absolutely. It's best to start them out for a couple of days, I'm sorry, but-
Yeah, you don't start school on a Monday. Teachers don't want to start school on Monday, nor do kids, especially the younger ones, because they they, the first full day of school for your pre-K, K one is exhausting for kids. And so we try to start towards the end of the week and we generally start with an early dismissal. Okay, because those youngest ones really need that. Plus it gives Mr. Schmidt time in the high school to take care of lots of responsibilities. Want to do this, want to get this checked out, want to get this form done, want to have these meetings, take care of all that stuff in kind of maybe an abbreviated schedule. And then you start to get into the full routine. Okay, so so that's how we built this calendar. It's how we presented it to you for your approval, which you get it. Okay? In the meantime, the NSA A decided to leave state track the way it was. So state track for C and D is not on Wednesday, Thursday. It is on Friday, Saturday. Okay, and so that primary factor that I used, the NSA A heard from class A and they said, we kind of like state track on a Wednesday, Thursday. State, class A tends to have a little more influence with the NSA A. So that factor isn't there anymore. But I I, what I, what I would recommend is, because I I I mean, I get it. I I heard from from one family partner of the meeting that reached out to me. If we have a light winter- If we have a light winter, I mean, you can absolutely make a decision to say, well, we only had one snow day. Um, and then as we work throughout the year, your administrative team can advise you on where we feel that we are with regard to days, hours, and such and whatnot. Now remember, you contract the teachers for a hundred and eighty-five days.
Doesn't mean you have to use them.
No, I'm talking about your teacher contracts.
Yeah, but you don't have to have them.
The district's paying them.
That's what you're paying.
So, it's the tax.
Okay, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars per day in pay and benefits, wouldn't you just say take it out?
They get, what, three months off a year anyway? I mean, what's a couple extra days?
Okay, the time in the summer is not contract.
They don't, you don't get, you don't, we don't pay the teachers for the summer, unless they're on an extended contract, or paid for a hundred and eighty-five dollars total.
Hundred and eighty-five days.
Hundred and eighty-five dollars, days, not dollars, sorry.
You get paid twelve months each year, but it's four.
It's just divided up into twelve, but you are not paid for those summer days.
I get it, I just don't understand if, uh, if we're well above the required days or hours, why not knock it back a little bit to where we're just a little bit above.
It aren't for the kids, you're right for the student hours, but you're, they, we pay the teachers.
Come do their little workshop, please, okay?
Okay, so what I can, what I, what I can tell you is, uh, if the NSA A keeps class D track on Friday, Saturday, which we have every reason to believe they will, uh, but they can change, they can change, but if they keep it there, I'll know in advance next year in calendar preparation, which starts as early as February. Um, because, trust me, I, I, I like to be done before state track as well, because I know how kids feel and how kids perform, as well as teachers, uh, as you get into the third week and beyond of May. Uh, it is always better to start early and finish early, people are generally ready to start, and they're generally ready to finish. Uh, but the first week of August is too early to call people back, second week of August is, is pushing it. But that's where a lot of schools are kinda ending up, if they wanna finish as early as the sixteenth or seventeenth of May, which we have in the past. And so I, 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 I can tell you that I don't intend, and I can tell our public that I don't intend to have us go in to the end of May, and into the fourth week of May, on a routine basis. I didn't like it either. I tried to work this calendar a variety of ways, visited with you a couple months ago, three months ago, I think, quite a bit of.
You did.
I don't like it, I don't like it, but I need a hundred and eighty-five contract days for teachers. And I know which days you can't end school on, and I know which days you can't start school on. And so here's where we are, so I, you have the authority, as we get into the spring, to modify the calendar. I wouldn't recommend it now, cause we have, I have so many things in place already for our first teacher days on the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventh.
Nobody's even crossed that grid at all.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think so, but I recognize.
What I wanted was an explanation on, just on the dates, as some people ask some questions, I can provide them, just a couple people, just a couple, I can provide them with a good answer, and that gives me a good answer.
So, so teachers and staff and students wouldn't wanna be back earlier, like, let's say the first week of August, if we're two, if we were getting out on like the fifth or sixth of May.
The first week of August?
And you're starting the first week, you're starting the first week of August, but you're getting out the first week of May, it's the same amount of time for a break.
First week of, well, I would probably hear from farmers as well, that the first week of August, I need my kids for this, this, or this. That would be a dramatic shift in the calendar, which you don't wanna do. First week of August, the first week of May, uh, plus I need to have students here at least through that third week of May, uh, particularly high school students. Um, so a, a calendar that we've had the past five years works very, very, generally very, very well. We haven't had a lot of negative feedback on that calendar. This one is a four-day later in May, as a result of, you know, changes in communication at the NSA A level. I'll accept responsibility for it, uh, for not bringing it to you maybe back a month ago and saying, hey, do you guys wanna now do this? Because our state track did not move to a Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, I already had several things scheduled for the fifteenth of August for our teachers, which is the first day I need them back to start counting to one eighty-five.
Good.
So that's the, not the clitoris portion.
That's, I understand.
But, but please, um, I'd be happy to share that conversation again, if you have somebody that rightly recognizes that this seems like we have a week more of school than what we've had in the past, and is this because of the Friday early dismissals? It's not, but that would be a reasonable conclusion maybe for some.
Uh, that was, those dots are starting to get connected a little bit. The point was because of the professional development that we had in with early dismissals, and I couldn't answer that question for sure.
If you would like, I can sure send that out on a Power School email, same language to all of our families, because there are probably more than five folks out there, there's probably not all of them, but I, I would be happy to send that explanation out, essentially the same one that I put in an email to a concerned parent that I visited with last week. So everybody has the same language, might not like it, might not agree with it, uh, and I recognize that. But at least they have, all have the same explanation, the same one that I've just shared with you, uh, on why this calendar seems to be quite a bit different than, than our previous years.
So we've never ever had to have kids go to, like, have, I guess I remember when I was in school, we got out of school like on the eleventh or twelfth, like, let's just say the eleventh or twelfth for, if we were out of school for a couple of days, you had to come back to school to do your practice for track to go to state track. You guys don't do that anymore, I take it, like, like we're pun, we're kinda punishing like every other kid if it doesn't bother track?
Chance, you approved this calendar three months ago.
I'm just asking a question about maybe for next year.
Okay, I just shared with you that I, my plan is to go back to a Friday of state track and count back.
It revolves around state track though, so your, your goal is to keep the kids in school until state track, correct?
Which is the third week of May, which is still as early as about any school dismisses for summer.
Okay, I don't know, I can, I'll find you a couple of schools that get out.
You can find me a couple, Chance, that's fine, uh, I don't have to follow the couple that you find, there are always examples.
All the north or everywhere else?
So you approved this calendar three months ago.
I need to hear the explanation.
So I have, to go back to Melissa's comments earlier about your kids like going to town today. So if we're having school that.
Also, the, the school doesn't revolve around my kids.
No, I know, but I just had, it brought up a question to me, because I don't know that your kids do a lot of sports via state track or whatever, I mean, I know they do some, but I don't know if they're in every sport. So is there a difference between, say, you wanna keep, she wants to keep her kid home, boot camp in the pasture, gets their homework done ahead of time, just like a kid that's going to state track? Same thing, he's not gonna be in school, but he's got his homework done before he goes state track. Would that be a no-no for somebody to do that? Have, keep their kid home to work, whatever, do whatever, you know, a legitimate reason for a day, but meet all the requirements that athletes do and can go to.
If it's a day a week, then it, then it would be tough. Now, if a student is participating in school activity, that is not an absence, that's not a school activity. A parent keeps their, their child home for any reason, that's their prerogative, but it's an absence. And we do have statute that requires compulsory attendance, and so we maintain that. And we, we rarely have concerns with what we would, which we, where it rises to truancy, and that's the statute, is if a student is tru, which just means essentially they're skipping school. So i- i- if, if a parent says, my kid's staying home today, well, we ask if they're ill or not, cause we like to document that. Uh, but it's, it's very rare where we have conversations as administrative team about students that we feel, uh, are being, are truant. Uh, but we are required by statute to notify the county attorney if a student misses twenty-plus days.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, we keep, we keep track of that, we do notify families if their children might be on pace to that, and so, um, and that may be of some source of irritation to folks, we understand that. Uh, so sometimes we have some robust conversations, but oftentimes, hey, I mean, people are, they, they recognize it, we, we, we want your child in school. So if they keep their child home, that is absolutely okay, but if it happens, if they're pushing twenty, then.
Yeah, you don't want it to happen all the time, for sure.
And to answer your question to me, Mike, yeah, there's a lot of people, I think it's good that it's being set at this meeting and it's recorded, there's people that are asking that, like, well, if my kids have their homework done, can they miss these days? Kinda knows very well that I called him and said, Justin's gone, or I need help, and the kids have stayed home, they make up their time, they make up their homework, and we kinda make it work. And I think as long as people, the community understands that, that it is pretty much that simple.
Okay.
But I think it's also important that the community understands that there's kids that aren't quite as honest, and that they aren't always showing up, so.
And it gets, it falls on the administration to figure out who, and it's, sometimes that's tough to do.
Our, our principals are, are pretty, do a good job of making that distinction, and again, it's, it's really pretty rare, so.
Okay, all right, am I ready to move on? We gotta, let's see, we gotta make a motion to approve the.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to throw the handbook for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three as stated.
I'll send it on.
Spend first and seconds or anywhere discussion. Yeah. Yes?
No, the discussion, yeah.
Tim, yes.
Again, I.
Tim, yeah, Tim.
Yep.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Okay, report, activity director.
I gave you guys a list of coaching positions, um, junior high girls' basketball, junior high boys' basketball, I need a coach for each of those, yeah, that's the whole plan, get those filled before school starts, and that's it.
Okay. Um, we just have a few pieces of information about summer school, it went really well. Um, we had forty-five students participate in the elementary, and three-quarters of those kids showed up day in and day out, and I really appreciate the twelve staff members who helped make it happen. Um, I gave you just a simple chart to show you some numbers as far as how much they improved in reading and math over the summer. Um, we are still working really hard with branching minds, I mean, that's something that Kyle and I have been working on to develop for our staff when they come back in August. Um, you heard Dr. Earl talk about having things scheduled in those first three days of school, and a lot of that time is devoted to our staff to help kind of get this branching minds program up and running, so. Um, and then the other thing we talked about a little bit with our handbooks is just making advantage, a K-twelve, or not a K-twelve, a four-twelve program for our students, so we're going to make that a universal piece for everybody as well.
So there be a, uh, notification of coaches that certain students won't be at the practice, or will be late, so they aren't waiting for them, or don't know where they're at.
Yep, we'll have a live, uh, Google Doc that shows everybody that's supposed to be here, so coaches can check it and know where they're at. Typically, kids know faster than anybody, so they'll be aware of it.
That's your whole report, we'll.
Yeah.
How, how come some of these numbers on here, Mrs. Atson, are above a hundred?
Uh, because it's not out of a hundred, it's a scale score.
Okay.
So that's with just reading for upper elementary.
Okay.
Everything else, if it's a percentage base, it's out of a hundred.
Gotcha. So you don't have anything to compare this to previously, percentage?
Um, no, because I, like, last year, what I did for you was graphs for each student in each grade, and some of these, um, pre and post tests were a little different from last year, since we have different teachers, so I just went through and showed overall growth average per, per class.
Looks like it's well worth it. Okay, eleven for president's reports, and a superintendent report.
You see, uh, I scheduled the, the welcome back dinner for staff on Tuesday the sixteenth, so we'll do what we've done in the past, if that's in a field review, if I've made those arrangements. Uh, there is your list of staff to be recognized, um, at that event. Um, so, uh, the, the staffing for twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, with the addition of, of Mrs. Kraus, who, who, uh, I don't think has ever said, I don't want to teach. Uh, yeah, she'd probably like to stay retired, she's come out of retirement a time or two. Uh, she loves to teach, and that's why she's served this district as long as she has, uh, and certainly as a volunteer accomplice, uh, for years and years and years, and so, um, so she will, she will teach our elementary vocal, and Ms. Beagle will be seven-twelve, uh, vocal and instrumental, and, uh, it looks like we are working with, uh, Crystal Lynn Ginn, who is Osmond Public School, to share about point one-five of her time. Uh, we shared a vocal teacher with Osmond several years ago, actually, her husband, coincidentally. Um, so we're, uh, visiting with them about having her come to teach our elementary band, so that our elementary students will continue to, uh, to have the opportunity for band to be exposed, uh, you know, to that curriculum. So, uh, you know, with regard to hiring her, you were, you were misinformed by Brock, he has not known all the facts and the truth, and everything that went down, and every conversation and every email. It is true that we definitely like to hire alumni, certainly like to hire people that live in town. That is not the only factor, and I never said, if you live in town or an alumni, we'll hire you, that does help, but you have to be the right fit. And the administrative team makes that determination about whether that person brings the right personality, character, experience, and such. We make that determination, we make that recommendation to you, okay? And so you can be rest assured, uh, that we take that very, very seriously. Uh, and we go to a tremendous amount of work to try to make the right goals, to be the right decisions, not always easy decisions, that is true. Um, so, and there are also some confidential conversations that I'm having with other candidates that are out in the field right now, uh, that I'd like to consider for the future, that plays a factor as well. That's a conversation that I can't, can't have publicly, uh, you know, at this time, that, you know, I'm trying to think about the future, and who is out there, and who we can already start to, um, to talk about maybe as a candidate for, for next year, or maybe even the year after, and that's a factor as well. Okay, so, uh, we feel good about that, we do look to hire at least one more new para, we're down two paras in the elementary, and we did lose a student that required a full-time para. Uh, so at this point, we're looking to for sure hire one more para that we might split between high school and elementary, uh, and then we do have some good candidates for that. So if we did feel, uh, we, we were understaffed or couldn't serve students the way we need to, uh, that, which can be a tough decision, sometimes you just do the best you can with what you have, uh, because you have, you have to make economic decisions, uh, on that, and so, um, so that's, uh, where we are with, with staffing. Uh, I've been contacted by Northeast Community College, they would like to use our facilities to teach driver's ed program for students in the area. I think that'd be great service to bring to our local community. Uh, and so I might finalize that with her, it would be a three-hundred-dollar expense. Driver's ed, under TASS, was pretty cheap, uh, and so it's a whole different animal, but folks can decide, excuse me, whether they want to invest three-hundred dollars in driver's ed program, uh, so it's a lot of hours, classroom hours and driving hours, but folks would, folks would have the, the option to, uh, to do that. So I'm working on that, and that could start as early as the third week of, of, of August.
That'd be a summertime, yeah.
It would be a Wednesday, Wednesdays and Sundays.
Oh, not the summer.
When, uh, it would be, uh, end of September. So, um, again, if that's the only time that an instructor might have to bring that service out here to the rural area front door, or, well, folks can just make decisions about whether it works, and if it works, maybe we can offer it again later in winter or something. But those would be tough dates for a lot of people to keep as busy as we know.
How many weeks would it be?
As, as, it'd be one, two, three, four, five days, five classroom days and ten hours of driving. Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll push those out pretty quick, and we'll see what kind of response we can get. This would, obviously, we would, folks from, this isn't just plain public schools, it would be folks in the area that might want to, to be interested in that. Um, I had the opportunity to apply for a clean bus grant, so a propane bus, friends in Osmond have them, I know they've got some problems with it. Bob would not be excited for me, uh, to apply for a grant, only covers half of it, so it'd still be about a sixty-thousand-dollar expense to get a clean bus, but that's part of all, as part of some covid relief grant opportunities, but just wanted to let you know that, that I had looked at that, uh, to consider that. And I, I, I certainly, and, and, you know, I apologize, I don't like to quarrel with members of the public, I don't like to do that. That's, that's my bad, I wish I could have conversations privately and not be blindsided in a school board meeting with opinions and, and interpretations of things, and so, yeah, so I, I apologize to you, um, and to members of the public, um, I need to. Uh, and as members of the public, uh, I need to represent you in the school district better. Uh, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any other comments or? All right, you're adjourned. Thank you.